Tuesday, May 6th, 7:07, starting a little late. And this is the regular meeting of the full City Council in Hoyoke. The clerk will call the roll.
Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Bartley?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Givner?
Here.
Greeney?
Here.
Jordane?
Here.
McGrath Smith?
Here.
Murphy and Bledi?
Here.
Ocasio?
Here.
Israel Rivera?
Here.
Jenny Rivera? Sullivan?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
And all its people.
And the City Council.
And all its people.
Jenny did last.
All right, so this meeting is being recorded and translated. It's... This meeting's being recorded and translated on Zoom and through the public access station. Councillor Bacon's name was called this evening to read the... or to vote first. And I, before we do anything else, I do have... I would entertain a motion to take a roll call vote that, for the purposes of this meeting, would be applicable to all motions to receive, to refer items to committee, remove items from the table, place items on the table, package items together, comply with items, or suspend the rules unless there is objection.
So moved.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Don't... Yes?
We have a moment of silence here?
Yes, absolutely.
A moment of silence for Matthew Sattler, who passed last week. The Sattler family is a longtime, wonderful Hoyoke family, and the entire community is grieving with him.
Thank you. Councillor Bartley, did you also have?
Yeah, I might as well do it three at once. Thank you, Madam President. I actually had two of them. So, one is for Molly McGovern. So she's the daughter of Rep. Jim McGovern, our neighboring district, and she was 22. And the other one is for Bob Bissonette. That's Mike's brother. He was 83.
Thank you. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. So, we do not have any public hearings this evening. Public comment? No one has signed up in council chambers. I'm not seeing anyone online. So, going through the agenda here. Skip over... Should we go to three?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to take it off the table if it's ready to go.
Second.
Okay. Movements were made and seconded to take item three off the table. Item three is the minutes from the April 15th, 2025, meeting. Any... Or the motion was to take it off the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there any discussion or corrections, additions?
Motion to receive and approve.
Second.
Movements were made and seconded to receive and approve the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item four? Do we have what is needed for item four? No, not yet. Okay. Item five?
Keep that table.
Keep that table, no problem. Okay. Six? The Committee on... Were we waiting on language for six, or?
We're waiting on six to stay so that we will be ready to package all the home rule petition materials together and send them at the same time.
Okay.
That's why it's staying.
So we'll keep going. How about seven? Or eight?
Nope. Did we get seven and eight?
Do we have the legal language?
I see something on our best mark seven and...
Let's look at it.
All those...
We do.
We do.
Just a point of order on seven.
Sounds great. Go ahead.
We didn't get that for the 48 hours, so I don't think it's...
Okay, we can leave it on the table.
Take that up.
And I don't see eight either, so. Seven's there, though.
So tabled?
Well, just keep them on the table.
Yep.
Go over those. Thank you.
You're doing great.
Thanks, us, Howie. All right. Item nine?
Received and sent to public service.
Second.
Second. Item nine is from the mayor. Letter appointing Ms. Lottie Ruwa, 15 Portland Street, for the interim Director of Veteran Services. Received and sent to public service. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ten is from the treasurer. Reports on top 100 salaries, top 100 salaries for schools, and salaries of elected officials.
Motion to receive.
Motion to receive? Councillor Jordane?
Yeah, and I believe Jeff usually puts those every year on the website, so if he would be kind enough to update those.
Yes. Already done.
Wow, look at you.
Wow.
Nice job.
All right.
Go off.
Motion to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And those can be found on our website. Thank you, Jeff. Item 11 is from Desi, interim commissioner. Final cover memo for HPS exit assurances.
Madam President, can we take up 12 with that as well?
Sure. Yep. Movements were made to suspend the rules. Take up items 11 and 12 as a package.
Received and sent to committee.
Receive and send to committee. And so 12 is also from Desi. Final exit assurances, Hoyoke. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes, to the joint committee.
To joint committee.
Please, yes. And at some point, we'll have a meeting. I'll connect with you and Howie and others. And probably a good idea to touch bases with our school department brethren and sisters on this topic.
Sure thing. All right, so send to joint committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item 13 is a communication from Leia Maldonado. Sick and dead cats in Hoyoke. Receive.
Motion to receive.
Anyone else?
Yeah, why don't you receive and send that to finance? Because I have an order upon this down the road.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Receive and send to finance.
Yeah, just as a communication.
Okay. Oh, yeah, you do have an agenda item tonight, right? Yeah. Okay. All the... Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. 14 is a notification of intent to...
I meant ordinance. I said finance by mistake.
Okay.
Because I wasn't thinking.
I... yeah.
Just some motion reconsider. And then just...
Second.
Movements were made and seconded to reconsider. All those in favor?
Aye.
And motions to receive and send that to ordinance, because it goes with the order.
Second.
Okay. Motion is to receive and send to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. 14 is from Adam Mulcahy and Christina Guusik. Notification of intent to sell under MGL.
Is there anything we're required to take action on with that?
Oh, there's a... Oh, there's a memo here with it. Oh.
I thought maybe we were getting this... Is there anyone from the...
Yes, Madam...
Yeah. Councillor Bartley?
Yes. We've had... Okay, this is under 61A. Okay. Yeah, this... We had this once before. It's... I'm going to make a motion to receive and refer this to DGR.
Okay. Movements were made and seconded to receive and send to DGR. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. 15 is a petition for a speed hump from residents of Elm Street. Ordinance? Does that go to ordinance now, or?
It will go to ordinance.
Okay.
So motions to receive this and refer it to ordinance, please.
And a copy to the city engineer.
Okay. Motion to receive and send to ordinance with a copy to the city engineer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. 16 is from the Fire Commission Board. The 2024 Annual Report.
Be received.
Motion to receive. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Suspend the rules. Seventeen and 18 be received.
Second.
Movements were made and seconded to suspend the rules and take 17 and 18 as a package. And receive... Seventeen is from the City of Hoyoke Health Benefit Meeting, the minutes from March 24th, 2025. And 18 is the minutes from the Board of Fire Commission from March 19th, 2025. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Madam President?
Yep.
Guess we could take, if they're renewals, 19... Suspend rules to take 19, 20, and 21 as a package.
Second.
And put them before us.
Motion has been made and seconded to suspend the rules and take items 19, 20, and 21 together as a package. And 19 is... They're all renewals of petitions. 19 is a petition for a secondhand license at 50 Hoyoke Street. 20 is a petition of a renewal for a secondhand license also at 50 Hoyoke Street, which is GameStop. And then 21 is a petition for a renewal of a pawnbroker license for 448 Appleton Street. Looking at all of the attachments and sign-offs. Everything was signed off. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, so the motion would be to grant the renewals and make sure that any pending conditions remain present.
Okay. Motion's been made to... And seconded to approve the three renewals and that the existing conditions will remain. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Oh, I have to do a roll call. Just kidding. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to approve these three renewals.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. Thank you. With that, you've approved it. 22 is a petition from the Mass Cannabis Growers Cooperative, LLC, of One Cabot Street, for a marijuana manufacturing establishment. Ordinance?
Ordinance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
23 is a petition for a drive-through facility for Hoyoke Retail LLC at 1504 North Hampton Street. Did you... Councillor Bartley?
Yeah, we always send, you know, new rules to drive-throughs to the DGR committee. And I just can't picture 1504, but I think that's the former Lynch School. But I'll stand corrected by somebody, but...
Yeah, oh, it's the old subway? No, it's the... It's the new...
Oh, where Bank?
The Bank.
Where Lynch was?
Where Lynch?
Okay.
Yeah, that's right. I thought I said that.
All right.
All right.
Cool, so send to DGR?
Yes, please.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Oh, wow, President's Report. Awfully quick for the President's Report. I'm here for it. I just have a couple of reminders.
Say where the old subway is.
Now I'm curious. All right, so... My ADHD is kicking in. I gotta focus. All right. So just a couple of reminders. The State of the City, the special meeting for the mayor to present the budget is next Tuesday, 6:00 PM. And then that will be followed by budget hearings. There's three. This will give us enough time to hopefully vote on the budget later in June. So that's May 19th, May 28th, and June 9th. And you should have received calendar invites already, so thank you, Jeffrey, for that help. And we tried to organize it so that the departments that historically don't take up too much time, we put them at the front. And then the ones who historically take a little longer of a discussion, they'll be a little farther down on the agenda, so hopefully that is efficient for everyone. And then just something that I was sent an email about. I think you all might have been too, but the Hoyoke Community Advisory Team and the School Committee would like to know what qualities and skills are important in a Hoyoke superintendent. And community members are invited to share their thoughts during two in-person forums and a virtual forum. They're scheduled for Monday, May 19th, the in-person ones. So there's information on the school's website, on the... On social media, but hopefully folks that are tuning in are able to... And if you can't be there, there is a survey as well, so just try to do that. And I think that's it. Did you ask? Oh, yes. I had to make one more announcement. Thank you, Jeffrey. This is just in order to comply with open meeting law. The mayor and I approved a Tourism Advisory Committee meeting to be held at 4:00 on May 20th. So just making sure folks know that in order to accommodate schedules. And I think that was it. Is there anything else? Anyone else wants... Councillor Greeney?
Yeah, just briefly, I don't know if you're all aware, but Devin Sheehan, our school committee man, has been selected to lead the National School Board.
Yes.
Which is a big... Kind of a big deal for a young man from Hoyoke to lead the National School Board.
I love it.
That's terrific.
Congratulations.
Maybe we should... Maybe should send him a letter, congratulations or something.
Yeah, definitely. Be happy to do that. Congratulations, Devin, if you're watching. I know you love watching City Council meetings, so... It's like not really... And he did a great job emceeing the spelling bee for the Homework House. So... There you go. Councillor Devine?
There's a great article on Devin in the Hoyoke Sun.
There you go. Councillor Givner, did you have your hand up?
We're having the first Community Voices for distracted driving campaign for Hoyoke. That's going to happen at Hoyoke Media this Thursday, May 8th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. It will include a presentation of what the program is, the scope of the campaign, and it'll be the first focus group included. So that should be pretty awesome. The full community is invited.
Councillor McGrath Smith?
I just wanted to name that the Fishway is now going to be open for its season starting this weekend. So, folks who are listening, I always love going to the Fishway and watching the fish lift. So... And it was closed for a season because of repairs they had to make, so folks couldn't go last year. So it's now open starting this weekend.
Making a comeback. Love it. Thank you for the reminder. Anyone else? Okay. Great. So we will do reports of committees next. Ordinance? The Committee on Ordinance, to whom is referred an order that the DPW install a handicap sign for Susanna Morales at 361 Chestnut Street? Recommended that the order be adopted, amending Anna Rodriguez to Susanna Morales at the request of the Disabilities Commission. Councillor Rivera?
Yes. So this went by... Got filed and got approved by the Disabilities Commission. We amended the name because I believe although the permit is assigned to Anna Rodriguez, we included Susanna Morales because I believe it's the daughter or the worker of Anna Rodriguez, and she's the one that actually drives the vehicle back and forth. So just making sure that they're able to park in the parking space as well, too. But it got voted for zero, I believe, to get adopted. And if there's no other discussion...
Councillor McGrath Smith?
Do we have all the documentation that we need?
Jeffrey just said we did not get the measurements yet.
Yeah, because I don't see it in the packet.
All right, so then...
Okay. So is there a motion to?
Table.
Table? Motion's been made and seconded to table until we have the documentation needed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Madam President?
Yes, Councillor Devine?
We could remove item 25, 26, and 27 from the table.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules and remove items 25, 26, and 27 as a package. All those...
They're not on the table, but we can do them...
Oh, they're not on the... Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I know what you mean, though.
You know what I meant.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So I'll just read them briefly into the record here. 25 is the Committee on Finance. An order for a transfer of $3,000 as follows. Elections, officers, postage, registrar voters. Recommended that the order be adopted. 26 is a transfer request of $3,000 from elections officers to equipment and office professional supplies. Recommended that the order be adopted. And 27 is also finance transfer request of $3,000 from elections officers to printing and binding. Recommended that the order be adopted. Councillor Devine?
Motion to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the second reading.
Motion is to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the second reading. Any discussion?
This is from the previous special election. All the monies were transferred into one account. This will enable those transfers to be put in the appropriate accounts. Also, the transfer covers any mailings to inactive voters that the clerk had to do, and in addition, covers any other bills with the poll pads and et cetera.
Thank you. Is there other discussion, additions? Okay. So the motion was to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to approve 25, 26, and 27.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. Sorry, I have so many papers. 25, 26, 27. All right, 28. 28 is Committee on Finance, to whom is referred an order that there be a transfer of $3,800 as follows from school capital outlay to R&amp;M Public Library. Recommended that the order be adopted.
Motion to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the second reading.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt the committee report, pass the second reading. Councillor Devine?
And what's this for is the elevator in the library is having difficulty. It consumes a lot of electricity and the components. It has nothing to do with having an elevator person come in. That's a whole separate item. What this does is the elective connections aren't grounded as the way they should. So the electrician was used to troubleshoot and make corrections. And they did not need an elevator repair person. The electric company was Ramos Electric.
Okay. Is there other discussion? Okay. So the motion was to receive, adopt the committee report, and pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to approve item 28.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. That you've passed. That. 29 is... Committee on Finance, to whom is referred an order that the City Council accept the provisions of the 2024 Mass DEP Recycling Dividends Sustainable Materials Recovery Program. $7,800, no match, and authorize the establishment of a fund. Recommended that the order be adopted.
Motion to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the second reading.
Motion is to receive and adopt the committee report. I think you're just adopting, but...
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Under discussion?
Yeah, we had Linda Pratt, who many of us know. She's the Chair of the Recycling Committee. And also Ricardo DeValle. He is a solid waste recycling coordinator, and he's worked for the DPW for 18 years, and now two years as supervisor. Previously, the... What happened was Hoyoke Community College students actually accompanied trucks around the city, and they collected survey information to get the data and lease... For the line of recycling. A lot of people think that fines are being given out. They're not. All that's being done is they're letting people know that, um, they're, they're violating the ordinance, and, um, the request of the, there's a good article in the, um, Hoyok Sun, at request of the Hoyok Recycling Advisory Committee, the Hoyok Sun will be running a, uh, QR, QR code and links to the city's 2025 recycling calendar for the convenience of residents. So, we had a good meeting, and between Linda and, um, Ricardo, they have a good team set together.
Thank you, and, uh, I apologize. Um, Madam Clerk, can I clarify? Do, do the grants need, uh, second readings? I'm sorry. If we're accepting a grant, okay, I apologize. Um, so your motion was?
To, um, receive and adopt the committee report and pass the second reading.
Okay, sorry about that. Um, is there any other discussion? I know this is a very hot topic these days. Does anyone have anything else? Okay, alright. Um, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to adopt the, uh, the grant and its provisions. Twenty-nine.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, with that, you have passed, um, twenty-nine. Item thirty is, uh, Committee on Finance, to whom was referred an order, uh, for the amount of nine hundred forty-five dollars be authorized from the D P W Property Department's R and M Senior Center appropriation in fiscal year 2025 for services rendered in fiscal year 2024, which were unencumbered at the 2024 fiscal year end, recommended that the order be adopted.
Motion to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the second reading.
Motion, uh, has been made to receive and adopt the committee report, pass the second reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Um, under discussion, uh, Counselor Devine?
We had, uh, Matt Peterson in, or actually, I think he was on Zoom, and this is to pay for a late bill to, um, make the controls at the Senior Center for the Air Conditioning Better.
Okay. Other, anything else to add? Okay, um, so the motion was to receive, adopt the committee report, pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for item thirty.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, with that, you've approved thirty. Um, item thirty-one is, uh, from the Committee on Finance, to whom was referred an order that there be, uh, transfer of eight hundred forty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents, uh, from sick leave buyback to snow or other overtime and personnel equipment, uh, recommend that the order be adopted.
Motion to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the second reading.
Uh, motion is to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the second reading.
Second.
Um, under discussion, Counselor Devine?
We had the police chief in, and, um, all this is, is to cover a deficit for defensive tactic training.
Okay. Does anyone want to add anything?
I will say that he, he did say he enjoys coming to the Finance Committee meetings.
Yeah, that's sweet, it's...
Because we mostly say yes.
I was gonna say, what, it's been like three months?
Give it time.
Yeah, let's check in with him next year. Sorry, Chief. Alright, uh, the motion was to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to approve, uh, item thirty-one.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, with that, you've approved item thirty-one. Thirty-two, uh, was the Committee on Finance, um, to refered in, or transfer request of one hundred forty-five thousand, uh, from patrolmen and sergeants, um, to capital outlay motor vehicles, recommended that the order be adopted.
Motion to pass, to receive and pass, adopt the committee report and pass the second reading.
Motions are made to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the second reading.
Second.
Uh, under discussion, Counselor Devine?
Like I said, the chief was there, and what this is, is so that the Police Department can acquire four used S U Vs, Ford Edge, uh, I believe, from Markov Ford. Um, are, they only have thirty thousand miles, so they're still under warranty, and it covers getting the lights put on and, and the decals and all that stuff, and, um, the fleet that they have now is over twenty years old, so these cars will be used, cars will be used by the detectives.
Okay. Does anyone have anything that they would like to add? Okay, um, so the motion was to receive and adopt the committee report, uh, pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting for item thirty-two.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Rivera?
No.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, one nay.
Okay, with that, you've passed thirty-two. Thirty-three, uh, is the Committee on Finance, to whom was referred an order for a transfer of thirty thousand dollars as follows: From Education Plan to Personnel Equipment, recommended that the order be adopted.
Motion to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the second reading.
Uh, so the motion's to receive, adopt the committee report, and pass the second reading. Is it second? Was there a second?
Second.
Um, under discussion?
Yeah.
Counselor Devine?
And again, it was a great meeting with the chief, and, um, Sergeant Zerheid was also there, and what this is, is to purchase twenty bulletproof vests, as well as defensive tactics, tactics, um, tasers, radio headsets, and ballistic shields for the Police Department.
Does anyone have anything they would like to add? Okay, um, so the motion was to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the second reading.
Yep.
The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting in favor of thirty-three.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Rivera?
No.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, one nay.
Alright. Everyone's good. We're gonna move forward. Item thirty-four. Uh, Committee on Finance, to whom was referred an order of a transfer request of fifty-two thousand dollars, uh, as follows: From captains to R and M other, recommended that the order be adopted.
Motion to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the second reading.
Motion's been made to receive, adopt the committee report, and pass the second reading. Uh, Counselor Devine, under discussion?
This is, um, we had quite the discussion, um, and I, I feel bad saying all this, and I think the committee will agree with me. Apparently, the Police Department building has not, um, had a good cleaning in a long time, so the, uh, chief was able to get Sheriff Coche's team in, and they were able to, um, paint a lot of the rooms, they were able to clean up a lot of the things in the interior rooms. Um, they really need some cleaning equipment, such as a floor buffer. The women's locker room apparently was so dirty that they had to do a power wash on the floors, and he did show us a picture of that, which was quite honestly disgusting. Um, so, um, he's really doing a good job with this, and he, the building needs a lot of work from cleaning and painting to even lighting. Um, apparently, there hasn't been a light, light bulb changed in quite some time, so, um, that's kind of the gist of it. They really need to, um, keep the Police Department up and clean.
Okay, Counselor Jordan?
Yes, Madam President, you know, it's really interesting, again, some of us have said, where are the performance appraisals that most jobs have every year for city employees? Because you would say here, these are the things when you would s- have employees come in, you say, well, isn't it your job to mop the floor in the, in the locker room? And then they say, well, yeah, but I haven't mopped it in fifteen years, you know? At some point, when does a conversation happen so that we have to come in with power washers to do what we're paying people to do? And you, and you ask, it basically feeds into any of the narratives that many members of the public have about government generally, right, that, that basically, it's highly inefficient, people don't down deep really care, as long as they collect their paycheck, they go home, and it's a whatever deal. And you say to yourself, we're paying hundreds of people in this building that work there every day, and it goes this many years where, like, light bulbs don't get changed? I mean, at some point, the buck stops with certain people, and we're paying some of these people hundreds of thousands of dollars a year, and no one, it occurred to somebody that we had to get a new chief in order to turn, change a light bulb or to wash the floors? Um, it's, it's really a disheartening conversation, and to, that our new chief has to kind of come into that, and it really, you know, it makes you wonder, what else, what else is there? You know, we've had the, the audit, um, you know, some of the things I'll just mention that I was very encouraged about, um, was the fact that some of us had pushed a reform which was about not swearing in officers until they actually finished the academy, because we have so many that don't finish sadly for either physical reasons or whatever reasons. Um, that was sort of the exception to the rule, now it's sort of the rule of the rule, that, um, more people, it appears, don't finish than do finish. And we were swearing all these people and paying out benefits and settlements, and it's just this overall culture and other things that we're just all collectively aware of that have gone on down there, and, um, as supportive as so many of us are of the H P D, it definitely is in need of reform. When you hear a new chief come in and say the type of things that we're hearing, and the type of things he has to deal with, stuff like, oh yeah, we haven't had decibel meters in thirty years. Really? Um, the cameras that are around the building, we actually had vandals come and spray paint the building, spray paint police cars, and then you hear, oh, well, the cameras haven't worked for ten years. Okay, you know, you're the chief, you're the chief, you're the chief, you're a captain, you're a lieutenant, why aren't these things working? I mean, when has this council ever said no to any of these appropriations? We can't approve things we don't get requests for. I think we've been extremely supportive of the H P D and any of these needs, and this is, tonight is just another example, so, you know, um, I'm really encouraged, obviously, I'm a big supporter of this new chief, I'm very encouraged about where he's taking the department and a breath of fresh air, but, um, it's disheartening to see at this level because at a certain point, it becomes a message of, I don't care. Because when you see locker room floors that are so dirty that you have to have things power washed and all of this, it's, it's extremely disheartening, so hopefully, there's better days ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, I have Counselor Anderson Burgos, and, yeah.
Thank you, Madam President. So, Counselor Jordan basically, um, stole the points I was gonna make. Very solid points, um, and I agree with them. I, I also want to thank the chief because, like, he literally came in to clean house, like, that's basically what I'm seeing here. Literally came to clean house because when you clean up a, a, a place like the Hoyok Police Department, it really brings up morale, and it builds character. Um, I'm kind of just curious as to why this was left unattended. In other words, were they scraping, you know, where, because we all always know that they're always moving money around, right, to, when, especially when it comes to the budget, and so I'm wondering if they were kind of skeptical, or not skeptical, but bringing that conversation to city council, well, we also need money for this. I'm like, well, that's part of your budget, so what is it that they were doing? You know, at this point, it's pointless to, to ask that question, but it also gives me some insight of, is it, are they that scared, or not scared, but intimidated maybe, to come into city council and to ask for extra money, for money that we already given them? I don't know, whichever the case is, I'm just happy that the sheriff is, the new chief, sorry, the new chief is there, and he's literally, literally cleaning house. That was all. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Counselor Gibner.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to, um, say that hindsight is 2020. We know there were a lot of problems in the past. We have an audit to prove it, um, so I think, uh, it's unfortunate, but it's not something that we really need to address since it's in the past. You know, we have a new chief, he's handling things. I wish him the best. I, I have a lot of faith in him, and I really would like to see us move on as a city because we can't fix things that have already happened. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor McGrath Smith?
Thank you, Madam President. Am I correct that the, the janitor for the Police Department actually falls underneath the D P W? So, one of the things that I've been thinking about is where things are centralized and where they're not, and so is it appropriate for the D P W to have kind of farmed out these different janitors, different buildings, and they're centralizing their control and training and oversight over those people? Maybe that makes sense. Maybe it makes more sense to decentralize and have the Police Department be in charge of a janitor that they have clear expectations for, and is, they're in-house, and clearly, they're, they know, we have supervisory, um, uh, powers over. I also know that there isn't necessarily a clear job description for the Police Department janitor, so I wonder if someone wants to collaborate. I would be happy to work with somebody to come up with a language for an order where we ask Kelly to weigh in from the H R side around if there is a description, if there should be, um, that I'm sure the chief would like to weigh in on or even present a draft for, and also, I think we should think about if we think that person should have, should fall underneath the Police Department or should be falling underneath D P W supervision. So, I'd happy to, I'd be happy to collaborate with someone if anyone wants to work on language around looking into it.
Thank you. Counselor Greeney?
Yeah, Madam Chair, that was then, this is now. Let's support the new chief with everything we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor, uh, Rivera?
You can't learn from the past, if, you know, you, I mean, whatever. Hopefully, in the future, we systematically plan a way that it doesn't happen again. I guess that's all I would say. For me, the most important thing is systems and creating systems. If you realize something is broken, it's nice to put a Band-Aid on it and fix it for the time being, but it's about fixing it for the future. Um, so you gotta kind of know what happened now, or what happened in the past, so that you can fix it for the future. Whatever, though. Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Devine, and then Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, I just wanted to, a couple of things. One, also, to re-thank the Sheriff's Department.
Oh, you, are you in your microphone?
Hello?
There you go.
To re, to, to thank the Sheriff's Department, they did a lot of work as well, and this new chief is, is, Keenan, has been terrific. He's walking into a job that kind of has a lot of, um, problems with cleanliness. Let's just leave it at that, but that is in the past. He is gonna be doing, um, he's already starting, and although I believe Counselor McGrath Smith has her heart in the right place, collective bargaining can kind of take care of this, so I think we need to let that, let the chief take care of this, even though I know your heart's in the right place.
Thank you. Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, just, just a couple of things. I, I will say, though, when you have, when you're here for a while, you'll begin to hear the, everything's great, and I'm better than the last guy speech, okay? So, I just want you to know, it's not all just, well, that's the past, and everything's gonna be rosy tomorrow, because the guy before that guy who said that, and the guy before that guy who said that, they said these things won't keep happening, and it, it just reminds you, also in this department, and I, I gotta say, the D P W has issues, okay? When, we also had the, you know, nobody inspected the elevator for nine years at the parking garage, um, it's those kind of things, and now the city gets fined, and, and, and there's a lot of other examples of that type of thing that we've seen, but I want to just point out, one of the other reasons why I was such a big advocate about the see something, say something, compliance line is because of exactly what one points out, which is correct, which is, you know, if you're in a culture where I don't want to be the bad guy that says something, because then it's like, oh, what are you, not a team player, you're a troublemaker? Now, there's a vehicle for people to make these anonymous concerns, because I'm sure, guaranteed, you have a lot of really thoughtful people walking through that building every day, and if they see that, they don't want to be the, oh, well, I'll have a target on my back, because then, if I say something, then they're gonna start complaining about me, and this is just circular. So now, at least you have a vehicle, and I would encourage people, and this is why I'm pushing this, posters up, on the website, open to the public, if public sees something, all of this stuff, it's, we need this integrity and compliance and see something, say something culture, our leadership has to promote these things, so it isn't people feeling intimidated to say, because there's probably, especially where it was the women's locker room, I'll bet you, there was plenty of female officers that probably walked over those floors saying, I don't want to be the one that has to complain, and then I, oh, I'm just the complaining employee. I could totally see that, so anyways, I was, just wanted to make that point.
Thank you. Alright. All great points, everyone. So, the motion was to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the second reading, and this is for item thirty-four, just as a reminder.
Yep.
Um, and the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to approve the transfer request.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, with that, you've passed item thirty-four. Item thirty-five is, uh, the Committee on Finance, a transfer request for twenty thousand dollars, um, as follows: From Quinn incentive and in-service training to supplies ammunition, recommended that the order be adopted.
Motion to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the second reading.
Motion's been made to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the second reading. Uh, Counselor Devine?
Yeah, this is, um, from the chief, that, um, they need extra ammunition because, and he took the money from officers that were retiring, but apparently, the Commonwealth added another day that they had to do training, but didn't give you the funding, didn't give us the funding, so that's what he's looking for, for more ammunition, um, so that's what that money's being used for.
Uh, Counselor Greeney?
Yeah, just a clarification, please.
Just, uh, can you make sure you speak into it?
Yeah, clarification, please. Uh, the Quinn bill was basically for salaries and so forth, so is it completely legal that, uh, this money can be used that way?
Counselor Devine?
I believe so because I think, I'm not sure if it's taking away from anybody. It's $14,000. I don't know who the Quinn bill still is, who's under the Quinn bill anymore, to be honest with you.
Sure.
But.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yeah, so what happens is we appropriate in the budget every year, a certain amount of money if somebody retires and then that money becomes surplus because they retire before the end of the period. So it's perfectly legal. It's money that's just sitting there in that line.
Surplus, yeah. Also, yeah, the, I would imagine the auditor wouldn't have let it get this far if it wasn't legal, but that's just me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor Givner?
Hi, thank you, Madam President. So even though I was in this meeting, I didn't, I didn't think of it at the time, but what happens to all the confiscated like guns and ammunition? Can't that stuff be reused? I mean, I guess that's a question that I should have brought up then, but I mean, with everything that's confiscated all the time, you would think that training ammunition could be in this pile of leftovers somewhere.
Do you, does, does anyone want to try to answer that? Because I don't, but.
There you go.
Counselor, I saw Counselor Sullivan's hand first. Do you want to add? And then I saw.
The confiscated weapons are dozens and dozens of different varieties. What's needed for the police are for their own specific service pistol.
So.
Or rifle.
Thank you. And I just realized that Sergeant Zerhad is on the call and has his hand up.
Oh, good.
If everyone's.
Make a motion this.
But if this is going to take a while, I might send it back to committee. Motion was to suspend the rolls and allow Sergeant Zerhad to speak.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hi Sergeant Zerhad.
Hello, and thank you for letting me speak. I'll keep it very brief. The chief actually did want to attend this meeting tonight. There was an incident in the city that he responded to, so we apologize for not being there in person. But we cannot use confiscated ammo. The firearms are destroyed after the cases, after the case is resolved through the courts. Any firearms we receive off the streets are destroyed as well as the ammunition. So we cannot reuse those.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. Okay. Anyone else? All right, so the motion was to receive and adopt the committee report, pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor of item 35. Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Grani?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote. Okay, thank you. With that, you've passed. Okay. Item 36. Oh, all right. That was finance? Okay. Okay, okay. No offense, finance is just, it's a lot, it's a lot to read. So, I mean, I have, I have public safety updates, but I don't have enough signatures. So I think these are just going to have to stay on the table?
Keep on the table, yeah.
Okay. Do I need a motion for that? Or are they just there?
A motion 36, 37, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42 be laid on the table.
Second.
Okay.
I'm sure Counselor Rivera will have a meeting soon.
Yeah, or she'll just give us an update on these. Yeah. Okay, the motion was to keep these items on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So that brings us to item 43. And that was the Committee Development Government Relations, to whom was referred an order, communication from Attorney Dagnan Haines, Construction Wayfinders Temporary License Agreement. Recommended that the license agreement be granted. Counselor Givner?
Thank you, Madam President. So this was a, exactly what it says, a temporary license agreement that was requested by Construction from Wayfinders. They had their chief counsel, their construction contractor, as well as someone else from Wayfinders. Where's my notes? And basically, what they want to do right now is just put a fence around the building that they're going to be working on, which is, they said is a historical building. It's across from the library. They will, they've requested to use half of the library parking lot so that they can start construction, store things, have a mobile work unit there, like a mobile office. And the fence that they would put around it is basically for safety purposes to gate off the sidewalks and the alleyway. Part of the discussion included the fact that that property only owns half of the alleyway because as every Holyoke knows who has an alley to deal with, you only own half of the alley and it's your job to take care of half of the alley. So if you want to block off the whole alley, you have to get permission from your alley neighbor. So they're working on that. But they did, they do have an agreement with the library and they have permission from DPW. They had actually just come to our meeting from the DPW meeting that was giving them permission to fence around the sidewalks there. So the end goal obviously will be a, you know, beautified building with additional apartment units, all the sidewalks will be in order. So I mean, this is a good thing. And we, we voted anonymously to send it to city council for approval.
I think unanimously.
Unanimously, sorry. Not anonymously. We anonymously sent it to city.
Lindar, are you listening?
Yeah, we'd have a bigger problem. Unanimously, sorry about that.
All right. No more violations for me, please. Okay. Anyone else want to add anything? Okay, Madam Clerk, do I need a roll call vote for this one? It's a license? I didn't, I don't remember, but I just wanted to double check.
It's anonymous.
So all those in favor for the license agreement to be granted?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. With that, you have granted 43. Okay. Oh, sorry. Two, all right. 44, the Committee on Development Government Relations, to whom was referred a communication from Alicia Zoller with the Office of Community Development. Request for consideration of fiscal year 2024, CDBG. Recommended that the allocation recommendations be adopted. Counselor Givner?
So Alicia basically shared their recommendations for what should be done with the remainder of the CDBG funds. And we agreed on, so many sheets here, sorry guys. We, in DGR, kind of went against, well, we haven't seen, we could see what the other organizations or the other entities voted on, but I don't have them all noted here because the form we received was blank. But we did decide as a committee that we felt infrastructure was most important. So we voted to put 1.3 million to the Holyoke Sewer Rehab and 200K to the block pruning and tree removal project.
I think you're on the wrong one.
Am I? Might you have jumped ahead in our reviewing ARPA?
No, this is CDBG.
Okay.
No, it's ARPA.
You're right. I'm looking at the wrong sheet, but talking about the right thing. Awesome.
That's all right.
It happens to the best of us.
Oh, sorry. So for CDBG, we, we just agreed to accept their recommendations as a, as a DGR committee, sorry.
Accept the recommendations of, sorry, I missed that.
Accept the recommendation from, for the real, the reallocation of the CDBG fund.
Okay.
So their proposals are what we accepted.
All right, so that's for 44.
Yes.
Is there anything anyone wants to add about CDBD, CDBG recommendations? Counselor Jordan?
I just want to say I'm strongly in favor of these recommendations. Obviously, the only thing, but I, we just didn't have enough money. I would love to see Scotts Tower get some money at some point. I know one has pushed for that as Ward 6 counselor as well. But thrilled about the Wisteriahurst Museum wall for 471, just, I think that's wonderful and much needed and that's a great use of the money. So congratulations DG and R on item 44.
Counselor Rivera?
Just a real quick clarification. What was the, what are the intentions of the monies for the community development block grant again? Just for the public?
Is that a question of me?
Yeah, for anyone.
I mean, I'll look it up.
What is CDBG? CDBG is a grant program that's been around about forty. Yeah, community development block grant funds have been around since at least the 80s where it was designed to give, it used to be that Washington would say all these different amounts and then the view in Washington became, no, we're going to give a block of money for local communities to decide what they determine to be the needs. And it's based on a number of formulas and we've been doing this annual allocation. This happens to be, as I understand, reprogrammed funds. So at the end, if different things, same with the ARPA one, we're going to vote on in a minute on 45, where things had either the project didn't go through or they didn't even need it enough, we reprogram the extra funds and that's this second vote that we're taking.
Okay, so it can be spent anywhere throughout the city in any capacity, CDBG?
No, there are, there's census tracts that you have to meet, to meet low income status in order to qualify. And yes, large swaths of the city do not qualify under the census tracts.
Okay, thank you. That's just, you need to have an update. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. So recommended that the allocation recommendations be adopted. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to approve the recommendations or adopt the recommendations. Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Grani?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote. Okay, item 45 is the Committee on Development Government Relations from the Office of Community Development to present 2025 ARPA funding proposals for consideration and recommendations. Recommended that the allocation recommendations be adopted. Counselor Givner?
Thank you, Madam President. So this is a recap of my previous comment. That was for the wrong item. DGR decided to put monies forward for the block pruning and tree removal project, that 200K and the 1.3 million towards sewer rehab. Because we felt like those were areas that need the most attention and are losing the most funding. I personally, you know, in my gut feel like I would like to just build more housing units everywhere, but if we have no sewage, it won't matter. So that was our recommendation.
Okay. Counselor Sullivan?
I would also remind the council that on, at our March 5th meeting, we unanimously approved a, let's, I'll read it, it's short. On behalf of the voters and taxpayers of our city, we urge the mayor to use the remaining 1.5 million dollars of ARPA funds for use by the DPW sewer system projects. So this is right in line with the unanimous recommendation that we sent to the mayor two months ago.
Thank you. Counselor Jordan?
Yes, this is a great recommendation by DG and R and I agree with Counselor Sullivan also. It's in keeping with the, the view of the council. I would just point, these dollars, dollar for dollar, save taxpayers of Holyoke money because if we don't approve these funds here, we have to find them somewhere else in the budget and use general tax revenue to do it. So this is a 1.5 million savings to taxpayers, the use of these funds, which is exactly what many of us have been saying we should do. The only thing I will point out, it'll be interesting to see, I know that OCD office had requested 100K for administration. I don't know if that's a mandatory expense. We might see that down the road. But I would hope if they do, they take it from the 1.3 because I would also like to see the tree project go through. We have a lot of trees that need to be dealt with and we lost recently potentially a grant that we were counting on for trees under some reprogramming, so we'll see where that goes to. But nice, again, just my compliments to DG and R. I think you did a really nice job and I, I will certainly be voting in favor of the recommendation.
Bless you.
Bless you. Counselor Grani?
I'd like to move the question, please.
All right. Seeing no other discussion, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting to adopt the recommendations for item 45, for ARPA funding proposals. Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Grani?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Rivera?
No.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, one nay. Okay, with that, you've passed 45. So 46 is Committee on Development Government Relations, to whom was referred an order, communication from Alicia Zoller, OCD, American Rescue Plan Act Grant Update. Recommended that the order has been complied with. Counselor Givner?
Thank you, Madam President. So basically, this is a report that was submitted to us and it shows which programs were already completed and things that are not completed and also anything that was canceled or that we decided to cancel. So it's really, it's a useful document and it, it's just basically an update to see what's been happening in the city and where, where previous allocated funds were spent. And we voted to receive this communication.
Does anyone want to add anything else? Okay, so the motion is to, that the order's been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. 47 is the Development and Government Relations Committee, to whom was referred an order that V Care and the city engineer be invited into DG and R to discuss the companion order in ordinance committee concerning the issue of V Care's request of an additional parking spot. The ordinance committee respectfully requests information from DGR to best understand what may be needed to do in ordinance. Recommended that the order has been complied with, with the recommendation that the ordinance approve two, two loading and unloading spaces from Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Counselor Givner?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a correction, they requested one space and I, I'm pretty sure we approved, what we asked for was one space to be added, to give them two spaces in total.
Okay.
But this was a great discussion. Counselor Israel Rivera was in attendance as well as Nicole from V Care and the owner, and the owner, I didn't write it down his last name, but the owner, Sergey, was also in attendance. And basically, they made a good case for why they need loading spaces. I'm sure anyone who's driven through High Street or down Dwight, when they are having pickup and drop-off times, which is any time throughout the day, really, up till about three PM, notices vans parked on the corner, vans stopped on the corner, people getting out. So they, they definitely are loading and unloading whether or not they have the space to do it. And, you know, there's a lot of arguments for the building and whose problem it is, but quite frankly, they provide a service to many seniors in the city. They do pay for parking spaces for all their employees in our garage, so it's not that they're not willing to pay. They even mentioned that if they got ticketed, they would be, you know, they'd be willing to, they paid tickets all the time, that they're willing to pay for parking, but it's just not reasonable. The parking behind their building is allocated to the Social Security Office, and their vans don't actually fit in the spaces that are back there anyway. So they really made their case, in my opinion. The conversation really sparked the, what are the, you know, what kind of parameters do we have in place for when people ask for this kind of, this kind of accommodation in the future? So I, I got the impression that Counselor Rivera got the information he needed to move forward in ordinance to work on this further. And I think it gives us all something to think about, you know, because I'm sure we're going to get a lot of requests for loading zones after approving this. So if we put something in place that says, you know, a company of X size on this busy of a space that doesn't have parking included at their, you know, at their business, maybe qualifies for something. So however that wording gets handled, I think they do need this, the loading space, and anyone can use the loading, because obviously, it's public loading area. So we did recommend that this order be complied with, and we hope that the discussion in DGR helped ordinance. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Devine?
Yeah, this, Nicole, and I don't, I'm with Counselor Gibner. I don't remember the gentleman's name, but they were very interesting to talk to. And I think the two spots are Monday through Saturday.
They requested, they requested one additional spot. They already have one spot. The hours for the current spot were eight-thirty, one hour loading in the morning and one hour loading in the afternoon. So the request was to have an additional loading zone spot, Monday through Saturday, from seven AM to three PM. And the suggestion was that they request the same loading times for the other existing spot.
And one thing that Nicole also said was that, once they drop off a person, they will leave that spot and go park someplace else until they're ready to come back. So they won't be taking up the spots all day long.
Thank you. I have a clarifying thing, but I'm going to let Counselor Rivera start your hand.
So, yeah, first of all, we kind of copied it to, just to be clear, we copied it to DG and R because the conversation in ordinance became somewhat of a DG and R conversation. So we allowed it to happen in DG and R for the recommendations and all that stuff can be referred to ordinance, so that we can just have a conversation just strictly around policy. That being said, the parking spaces, to be clear, are not for V Care specifically. They are for anyone within the vicinity that wants to load or unload, that can load or unload at that space. So it's not to say that it's theirs, because we can't legally allocate a space to any individual entity or any individual, just in general. So that's, just to be clear with that. And then some of the rules or whatever it is, it'll be hashed out in ordinance, so we don't have to go back and forth here with that. I didn't want to waste nobody's time here, just so, I wanted to clear that up. But I thank you and DGR, and Counselor Gibner, Counselor Ocasio, and Counselor Devine, for taking it up over there and taking the time to have the conversation with them about it. It has been somewhat of an issue. We met in the mayor's office too as well, to kind of like, with the parking office, with the parking team and the traffic officer, to try to hash it all out. But again, it's going to go to ordinance, we'll have more conversation there about it. And thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, I'm not going to let you guys hash that out in ordinance. Alright, so recommended that the order has been complied with, with a recommendation to the ordinance committee to approve the spaces with limited hours. I'm going to, yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We have made it to motions, orders, and resolutions. And I know there's some, some of you have been kind enough to reach out about perhaps taking things up this evening. That's cool. However, as usual, if it seems like it should get referred to committee for whatever reason, let's just do that and, you know. But, alright, forty-eight, filed by Counselor Jenny Rivera, ordered that a handicap sign be placed at fifty North Bridge Street for Nelson Vega.
Send to ordinance.
Send to ordinance.
With a copy to disabilities?
Thank you, with a copy to disabilities. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, forty-nine is filed by Counselors Bacon and McGrath Smith, order that the ordinance for battery storage be reviewed and revised language be considered for small and large scale property, or, sorry, battery storage projects due to new information documenting safety concerns. Send to ordinance.
Ordinance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, fifty is filed by Counselor Anderson Burgos, order that a handicap sign be placed at three-thirty Jarvis Ave for Carrie Padua.
Padua. Ordinance and copy to disability.
Okay, ordinance and a copy to disabilities. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, fifty-one is filed by Counselor Bartley. "The City Council issue a proclamation to encourage all of us to support the advocates of mental health and those in need of their support. Further, the Hoyok City Council congratulates the support network on its thirtieth anniversary in supporting individuals in such need."
Receive and adopt.
Receive and adopt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Fifty-two, filed by Counselor Bartley. This is a follow-up to, order that the City Council implores the Office of Planning and Economic Development to put the city-owned parcel known as the St. Vincent Street Lots out to bid for the purpose of developing between one and three residential properties. This is a follow-up to the February third, twenty-twenty-five, letter, late-file communication from Attorney Mantowski.
Yeah, so I, I-
Counselor Bartley.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, I'll just, my motion is to refer this to OPED and to ask them to get back to us a order to declare these lots surplus after four years, please.
Second. Alright, so motion is to refer to OPED?
Back to OPED.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Fifty-three, filed by Counselor Bartley. Hoyok Ordinance Chapter fourteen be amended to protect the welfare of felines. The ordinance chapter can be provided by our administrative assistant upon request. This issue arose as a result of, with the Mass Department of Agricultural Resources and its director. Refer to ordinance, Animal Control Officer and Board of Health?
Yes, I'm old.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Fifty-four is filed by Counselors Bartley, Greenie, Bacon, Jordan, Ocasio, Sullivan. In honor of his induction to the Western Massachusetts Baseball Hall of Fame, class of twenty-twenty-five, Hoyok City Council issue a proclamation to our colleague from Ward Two and the city's former mayor, Terrence Murphy. FYI, the induction is June fifth, twenty-twenty-five, six PM, Wykoff Country Club.
Like to add my name, please.
Yeah, can I be added to that one too?
Whatever, is there anyone?
We could unanimously endorse that.
Thank you. Madam President?
Yes.
I had a little typo on there. Terry's got one R in his name. I'll figure just amend that on the-
Yeah, of course.
Proclamation, he's right. Thank you. And then the motion is just to add whoever wants to be added, and then to receive and adopt it, okay?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
Only because I have to go.
Yeah.
Can we just take, my late file is seventy-nine, just to receive and adopt it, please? Take it out of order, send the rules, take it out of order.
Second.
Just receive and adopt it.
Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules and take item seventy-nine out of order to receive and adopt, filed by Counselor Bartley, that DPW patch Hitchcock Street, Western End, near Westfield Road as soon as possible, as the road is in poor condition. And then please repave this section of the road once DPW is able. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, fifty-five is filed by Counselor Devine, order that the DPW create a street sign at the corner of Appleton and Crescent Streets for Reverend Miguel A. Cruz Way.
Be received and sent to Mike Gallagher at the DPW.
Second.
Motion's to receive and send to Mike Gallagher at DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Is there, perhaps we could, is there anything that could be taken as a package?
Yeah, if we could, Madam President. Item fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine?
Through sixty-four, perhaps?
Oh, okay. Thank you. Through sixty-four.
Okay. Second. Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules and take items fifty-six through sixty-four together as a package and send to finance. I'll read them briefly. They are all transfer requests that will be discussed later in finance. So that's fifty-six, well, first, well, no, okay. Fifty-six is a transfer request for thirty-five thousand dollars from School Capital Outlay to COA R and M Building. Fifty-seven is a transfer request of five thousand six hundred fifty-two dollars and sixty cents from School Capital Outlay to R and M City Hall. Fifty-eight is a transfer request of twenty-nine thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars from School Capital Outlay Capital Stabilization to R and M City Hall. Fifty-nine is a transfer request of six thousand three hundred thirty-five from Pay Refuse H M E O. And overtime, or two overtime, sorry. Sixty is a transfer request of three thousand sixty-six dollars and fifty-four cents from Tree Climber to Forestry Overtime. Sixty-one is a transfer request of forty-five thousand five hundred twenty-five dollars and fifty-eight cents from Tree Climber to Contracted Forestry Services. Sixty-two is a transfer request of twenty-seven thousand dollars from Firefighters to Overtime, Arson Overtime, and Hazmat Overtime. Sixty-three is a transfer request of ten thousand nine hundred forty-six dollars and thirty-four cents from Fire Captain to Deputy Fire Chief, Fire Lieutenant, Assistant Supervisor of Alarms. And sixty-four is a transfer request of forty-five thousand dollars from Firefighter to R and M Vehicles and Motor Vehicle Fuel. Send to Finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'd like to make a comment?
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. Counselor Sullivan?
I would just like to remind all of my fellow counselors now, here we have all these transfers, all these transfers, all these transfers, surplus money in all these accounts, ready to be transferred, and they're all coming in with just six weeks left in the year, in the fiscal year. Alright, so it's something to think about now as we get into our next budget season.
Thank you.
Yep.
Madam President, the next finance meeting will be on the twelfth of May.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Sixty-six is filed by Counselor Devine. It's ordered that there be a transfer of six thousand eight hundred six dollars and sixty-four cents, as follows, from Captain and Lieutenants to injured on duty. Counselor Devine?
Yep, Madam President, this is something we would just pass tonight. And if, unless I've got a different agenda, sixty-five and sixty-six on the agenda that I have, that I print up at home.
I skipped sixty-five, didn't I?
It's the same.
Yeah.
I think it's the same.
Oh.
Two different payrolls, actually.
Yeah.
What they're saying.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think that might be.
But I did skip sixty-five. I was-
Sixty-five?
I mean, I was looking, I was looking at sixty-six.
Sixty-five and sixty-six?
Thank you, Counselor Bacon. We can suspend the rules and take up sixty-five and sixty-six together as a package. So I'll just read it again, because now I'm like, I don't even know. But sixty-five is the transfer request for six thousand eight hundred dollars, eight hundred six dollars and sixty-four cents from Captain and Lieutenants to injured on duty. Sixty-six is the same amount. It doesn't. The paper didn't say the number of firefighters that this represents, just to let you know, I'm not necessarily withholding that information. Just don't have it. Okay.
I was just going to say that sixty-five I have, it's the payroll period number twenty-one, and sixty-six is payroll period twenty-two. And I do have, it's, I don't, I agree with you, there's, I don't have the names either, so.
Okay.
Motion to pass the first reading on sixty-five and sixty-six?
Second.
And motions been made and seconded to pass the first reading on sixty-five and sixty-six. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading. Any other discussion? The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting to approve both sixty-five and sixty-six. Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Greenie?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote. Okay, with that, you've passed it. Sixty-seven?
Motion to take sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine as a package, send to Finance?
Madam President?
Okay, motions been made and seconded. Do you-
Well, I just want to take up sixty-seven by itself.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, is that-
Explain why?
Sure, okay.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Devine?
We had originally denied because of where the money was coming from. So this is a change in where the money's coming from, from CAFO, out-of-state travel. And that's why I wanted it passed tonight. That's the only difference. And Kelly did explain, it was for munis training. So that's why, if you will, that we'll receive and adopt this and pass the second reading.
We still have to do the first reading in this.
Okay.
Yeah, but if, okay, so the motion is to pass the first reading. And I'll have to, we can do discussion and whatever the body wants to do. So motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading. Is there any other discussion or questions?
I'm familiar with it, so.
Okay. Then seeing none, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for sixty-seven. Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Gibner? Greenie?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy and Bledi?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Rivera?
Not here.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Ten yeas, unanimous vote. Did you want to do?
Okay, then you can-
What did you-
Motion to take sixty-eight, sixty-nine, refer them both to Finance, second package.
Uh, motions been made and seconded to take sixty-eight and sixty-nine together as a package and refer to Finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Do you need to read?
Oh, yeah, sorry. I've got too many papers up here.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Do you need to read?
Oh, yeah, sorry. I'm, I've got too many papers up here. All right.
It's okay.
68 is the, filed by Counselor Devine, it's a transfer request of $20,000 from civil engineer to professional engineering services.
Received and sent to finance.
Sent to finance. And then 69 is that the city council accept the provisions of the fiscal year 2025 firefighter safety equipment grant program, round two, $11,660, no match. Uh, refer to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Just lost my shoe.
That's the first.
Okay, 70 is filed by Counselor Givner, for earmarked funding, order that the counselors review and approved attached updates to city council chambers. DGR?
Um, DGR.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, 71?
71, 73 and 74 could be taken as a package and sent to charter and rules, please.
Second.
73, 74. Okay. Just read them. All right, 71 filed by Counselor Jordan, all three are filed by Counselor Jordan, is that Rule 8 be amended by adding a new Rule 8P related to, in case of the failure of the mayor to transmit to the city council a written recommendation for an appropriation for any purpose not included in the annual budget, which is deemed necessary by the council. After having been so requested by vote thereof said council, after the expiration of seven days from such vote, upon its own initiative may make such an appropriation by a vote of at least two thirds of its members and shall in all cases clearly specify the amount to be expended for each particular purpose, but no appropriation may be voted hereunder so as to fix specific salaries of city employees under the direction of boards elected by the people other than the city council.
Motion to suspend the rules for abbreviated reading of these three items for.
I didn't want to overstep and, you know, I, I just, yep, I just listened to the motions. All right, so then item 73 is filed by Counselor Jordan, and it's that the mayor, city clerk and auditor please come to the finance committee to discuss the city's compliance with MGL Chapter 41, Section 17 and Hoyok City Charter, Section 52.
And I apologize, 73 I meant to send to finance and 71 and 74 to charter and rules.
Okay.
So I just want to amend my, my motion. Yeah, because this one's a, this is a finance one.
Okay, so 71 and 74 will go to charter rules, 73 will go to finance, and so then 74 is filed by Counselor Jordan, that Rule 8 be amended by adding a new Rule 8O. And so those will go to charter and rules, and then 73 goes to finance.
Yes, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm sorry, what? No, we did those three as a package, now it'll be 72.
Uh, 72 filed by Counselor Jordan, the personnel director, please provide the city council with a list of all residency required positions and certification that all applicable employees are in compliance.
Uh, motion to receive, adopt, refer to the personnel director.
Okay, motion to receive and refer to the personnel director. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, 75 filed by Counselor McGrath Smith, order that we clarify our home occupation permit ordinance regarding the allowable number of virtual employees.
Ordinance.
Send to ordinance. All those in favor?
Madam President?
Yes, Counselor Bacon?
Um, if the maker of the order would be willing to accept and to clarify, if we could modify this by adding to also clarify the number of allowable employees in the home.
Counselor McGrath Smith?
So it would read, order that we clarify our home occupation permit ordinance regarding the allowable number of virtual employees and.
In person.
In person employees in a home?
Yes, please.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, uh, motion to amend the order and send to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Um, 76 was filed by Counselor McGrath Smith, order that city council Rule 9, I be revised from subcommittees should not be allowed to meet at the same time and same night. Two subcommittees should not be allowed to meet at the same time, same night unless the chairs of two or more subcommittees have called for a joint meeting.
Charter.
Charter and rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 77 filed by Counselor McGrath Smith, in order to declare parcel map 144 block 00, parcel 057 East Hampton Road as surplus property. Send to DGR. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can I ask?
Oh, sorry, Counselor, Bacon?
Thank you. Can you just describe where that property is?
I don't have that information tonight, but.
Maybe Counselor McGrath Smith knows?
Oh, Counselor McGrath Smith?
Um, this was related to Old Jarvis Road.
Okay.
Okay.
Was, this is something coming from the city solicitor's office that they wanted us to take up and discuss.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And a butter has approached the city around wanting to purchase it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Oh, he doke. Um, 78 was filed by Counselor Givner, another order to declare property surplus. This is map 10, block 1, parcel 2, Cavett Street, Hoyok Mass as surplus property. They've also been approached, the city's been approached by a butter.
DGR?
DGR?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Motion to adjourn?
No, we, we have late files and.
I thought we just went over the late files?
We did.
We have late, late files?
There was one more. There was, there was, there was a couple more.
Really?
Yep. And, wait, what's this one? Oh, okay, okay, yes, thank you. So 80 is the amended act for the recall of elected officials.
Okay. Motion to just table that and put it on the next agenda.
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion to table and, or lay the item on the table for the next agenda.
With a humble request that the law department please review, so we're ready to go on the 20th.
Okay.
Thank you.
Second, second.
Um, thank you. So, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then item 81 is filed by Counselor Rivera, that the honorable city council provide a proclamation to Jesus Morales on behalf of the city council for being recognized by the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Hoyok as their youth of the year.
Suspend the rules and adopt?
Second.
Second. Can I have a copy of that order, please, so I can do the proclamation?
Yeah, sure. Uh, motion to suspend the rules and adopt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Before I do a motion to adjourn, we, I'm, I, I just, I feel like I had to address it with the late filed orders. It's okay, I guess, that we're doing them, but I, y'all are like, kind of all over the